Good morning, yeah, good afternoon. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, special meeting agenda, March 2nd, 2022. I've read the suspl and persa via Zoom. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Milburn, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The pledge of allegiance is to be the flag of the United States of America. To be the republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, roll call of board members, please, Amy.
Russo. Melvin.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Mukenthaler.
Here.
Great, thank you. Item number four, we are here for one item today only, so just so everybody's aware of that. Looking for approval of the agenda, please.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion was made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Mukenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Item number five, public comment, agenda items only, limited to five minutes. How come you're already standing? I know, but I get to acknowledge you first, don't I?
Oh, you turned it on already, thank you. At the January 26th meeting, for the first time ever, Commissioner Russo responded to comments I made, and I appreciated that. His responses raised additional questions. I hope he answers them today. Commissioner Russo said, "Common sense goes a long way." Gate three, four, and five can't be opened because it has a steel plate across it. Commissioner Russo, why is there a steel plate across those gates, and why can't it be taken down? And who's really in charge of maintaining the legal level on Holden? Is it you or someone else? People really do want to know. The commission needs to be more transparent about the way it manages the level on our lakes. Right now, the public's kept in the dark. Dam management has no oversight committees, no published guidelines, so people know how the levels are supposed to be managed. There's nothing for us to see how you're doing your job. The only committee that we did have in Roscommon was for Higgins, and it was disbanded by Commissioner Melvin. Now you're going to have the Spicer group fix the problems that have been ignored by this commission for years. Back in 2010, you paid Spicer over $100,000 for recommendations on all three of our lakes, and nothing was done. You completely ignored the recommendations, and now there's a big rush because the dam's failing. You knew there were problems and didn't do anything about it. Now you're reacting to a problem instead of fixing something you already knew needed to be fixed. Here's some of what Spicer said about Holden back in 2010. Improvements to the operational features and procedures of the LCS are needed. Repairs to a damaged pier on the structure should be made. Scour prevention and targeted locations should be added. Recorded lake levels, on average, are above the established legal lake levels every month of the year. It is recommended that motorized gates be installed, a new stoplog system be installed, a damaged pier be repaired, target scour protection be added, and the monitoring system be improved. The planning level cost estimate for these items is $670,000. The estimate included five new motorized side gates, one new stoplog system, one new metal gate decking and rails, and new lake level control structure sensors, new electric and internet service concrete repairs and scour protection. It also budgets for engineering permitting and administration of construction costs. It's recommended to modify the operational features and procedures to improve the ability to maintain the lake level closer to the established legal lake level. This requires increasing the discharge from the lake with the objective to lower, on average, lake levels to be more consistent with the legally established level, end quote. Why didn't you implement the recommendations Spicer's made back in 2010? Why didn't the commission propose a special assist assessment district back then, as they are doing now? Why didn't you go for grants back then? Everyone here knows that Holden Dam has been a disaster waiting to happen for years. Now you're under the gun, and you're in a rush. Instead of posing for photo ops and congratulating each other on the great job you're all doing, you should have been doing your job fixing the problems with the dam on Holden and Higgins. The lifeblood of this county. Take a look at the graphic I've handed you from the USGS. It shows the levels over the past year in blue and the average levels for the past 30 years in yellow. I added the summer level and winter level line. The summer level is where Holden is supposed to be maintained from April 15th to November 1st. The winter level is the maximum drawdown level, and the winter is in between them. The summer level is supposed to be maintained at 8.1 gauge, and the winter level is supposed to be maintained no lower than 7.6 gauge. The other line averages show that the levels on Holden aren't maintained anywhere close to where they should be. The court order is never followed. You should have done something about this years ago, and you did nothing, just like Higgins. You've never requested a permit change from Eagle or the DNR or the court. You've never worked as a team, and you continue to dump more water from Higgins to Holden when it's totally unnecessary. You should be mitigating the unlawfully maintained levels on Holden and Higgins by sending less water from Higgins to Holden, and that would still be in compliance with the court order. That being said, I support your resolution for Holden. But you shouldn't wait until you're under the gun to do so with Higgins. Since you're going to fix Holden, you should also fix the LLCs on Higgins. Just as important, guidelines and lake management committees need to be created for all the lakes. In conclusion, I'm glad to see that this commission is finally doing something about Holden, and I support it, but you should also include Higgins and Lake St. Helen in the resolution you're going to vote on today. If you don't do it today, you should consider it for the near future, as grants are available now, and the cost would be much less than it would be doing for Holden. Fixing Higgins may not even require establishing a special assessment district. Everything you're doing now should have been done back in 2010, as I mentioned earlier. Higgins has not been able to maintain the legal levels for over a year now. They have as much of a problem on Higgins as there is on Holden. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Great. Diane.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
I'm not going to dwell on the past, because I actually wasn't aware of some of that. Let's just look at the future here right now, if we could, please. And I would respectfully like to ask Commissioner Mukenthaler, Commissioner Russo, and Commissioner Milburn to think about your district. Holden Lake, you're having these meetings in March, a lot of the people are gone. There's not a lot of information out there for people to make some decisions on, and so I think it just would be best if you could just wait until the more populace comes back to the area. And also being said, almost in line with this, gentlemen, is that I really feel that our area, our county, would do the best if we had a lake manager, a professional lake manager. And perhaps a commission that would include the drain commissioner, the administrator, and I'd also like to suggest John Hyde, Salt Lake Sewer Authority, to be on that commission to oversee this lake manager. I'd be happy to spend money towards that. I think that that would be something towards our future for all of our water lakes. And I think that's what we need to do. I think there's so many issues that happen in our county with the water that we need to have someone to look forward to, someone to talk to. Holden Lake went ahead and did our sewers 60 years ago. We did the milfoil on our own, no help. So it would be awesome to have some type of manager to make our county the best it is and the best it can be. So please, I ask that you wait with this today and come back with a better decision. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Hey, I did want to point out, we do have our representative here, Kyle O'Mara, from our law firm, Affey and Schultz, who's is helping us through this process, so I don't know if there's any questions any of the commissioners have of him on that. Any other public comment out there, first, though, out in Zoom land? Yes, who've I got?
My name is Nikki Flood, new to Holden Lake, been here less than a year, we are a new business owner. My comment is a few things. I never received, we never received a letter. I found out about this on Facebook, which I refuse to participate in the discussion because I don't know what that information really is and if it's true or not. And I'd like to say that as a new business owner, dumping tens of thousands of dollars into this community to make it look better, it'd be really helpful to know when we're going to get assessed another tax or fee upon us. Because we're wanting to make a change here, and we certainly want the lake to be profitable for everyone, but just a surprise is a little bit concerning. So that was my comment. We don't know a lot about the whole program, and I apologize for that, but I think it's important for you all to know that as a new person up here, you know, that letter never even reached us. So we couldn't even check into anything because we didn't get any information. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else out there, please? Yes, okay. Yeah, could you identify yourself and go ahead with your public comment?
Is that me?
Yep, that's you, yep. Identify yourself and then go ahead with your public comment, okay?
Sure. Ross Common Township Clerk. I just wanted to comment, I want to say that we, I think we can all agree that the lakes and rivers and creeks are one of the most important commodities in our county. I think we all want to make sure they are maintained the way they should be. I think that the infrastructure of the lakes should have probably been part of your ARPA funding monies, and maybe you can still use some of that towards this project or looking into it. I also wanted to say, there is a process under that law you're looking at to just do a preliminary study to find out the cost and to establish where the district's going to be prior to going into this part and doing it this way, instead of establishing it and then sending it all out. You can do a preliminary study to see what all the costs are going to be and show the people where that's going to be and what their fees might be. And I just think, I agree that there's a lot of people not in the area right now, and maybe it's not the best time to jump on and do this. Maybe just spending some of the ARPA money to just do a preliminary study might be the way to start. Or maybe even looking at doing a millage and giving the residents a chance to have a say, because I think you'd be surprised, a lot of people would vote for a millage to help the lakes. That's all.
Great, thank you for your comments. Any other public comment out there, please? Just a second, hang on, Norm. Nobody, okay. Norm?
Thank you. I believe the lady who mentioned the letter may have been confused with the Holden Lake Improvement Board letter that went out, and I would suggest you can call me at 989-5... Sure. Ready? And I will make sure a copy of that letter gets to you. And there has been continuing confusion, because the Holden Lake Improvement Board is reestablishing their district for the next five years. I've gotten a fair amount of pushback, a lot of it is confused with their property taxes. And so I understand it's confusing, but am I correct in that you guys, or it hasn't sent out any letters to the public? So. This is from the improvement board, ma'am, and we'll take care of that for you. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for your comments. We do have Stacy Hisong on there from Affey Schultz also, so when she was here and made the presentation here, I'm going to say a month ago. So if anybody hasn't, if any commissioners have any questions for Stacy or Kyle in regard to this resolution, which this resolution is only designates the lake level designated authority, this is only the first step in a long, long process. Mr. Milburn?
I appreciate the chance to talk, Mr. Chairman.
Hang on a second, though. I'll go back to public comment, because did I hear something from public comment?
No, Mr. Chair, this was just me, I was ready to make comment, I can't see if there was other people in the public physically attending, so I apologize.
Okay, all right, thank you, Stacy, all right. I'll go to Commissioner Milburn first, all right?
Are we still under public comment, please?
We are.
Do you want to be under public comment, or you can end public comment, go to new business?
I just had a question for the lawyers, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, since it's public.
It was brought up, I want to make sure the public's had a chance to speak, though, before I do. Okay. It was brought up by Supervisor Randall that if we waited another, at another time, I know a week or so ago, we had this on the docket, and asked the board for a table, that's why we're having a meeting today. I can understand where Supervisor Randall's coming from as far as getting the word out. If we did wait hypothetically, would it be in our best interest, or is it going to just prolong?
We only have a break now, and we renew the place, we might not renew the new permit.
Okay, I understand that.
This has been going on since May, it's been in the resorder several times. On the front page also, you know, we have a problem with the dam, and we need to move forward.
I just want to make sure that that question was addressed, and if we did, the millage was brought up by Clerk Milburn, we did a millage, but this is how we've done it so far, and I think the word is out there. I would like to ask the lawyers, though, what advantage would we have if we asked for a millage? Can you guys answer that question, or kind of shoot?
Well, millage, you would, everyone in the county would be involved.
That's right.
This is a special assessment.
Just for Holden Lake?
For just Holden Lake.
Are there advantages for a millage?
Part 307 requires a special assessment district, and I would recommend you follow the requirements of part 307, which doesn't allow for a millage, but does allow for a special assessment district. And one of the advantages unique to your community for that is that a millage would not require the Department of Natural Resources to pay, but a special assessment under 307 requires the Department of Natural Resources to pay for properties owned by the state of Michigan. And so that is because they own significant properties on your lakes, that is not an inconsequential amount of money that would be involved. So, one, the statute requires using special assessments, and two, that would make the Department of Natural Resources one of the contributors. And so a couple of comments. This, as I think the board is very aware, is the start of a process, which will, there'll be more than one opportunity for property owner input as to the special assessment district first in the boundaries with the circuit court action, and then into the methodology for the special assessments at that second hearing. And so there's two different hearings that property owners will be invited to and get that notice sent to them by first-class mail. This initiates that step. One of my concerns is that if the board doesn't take action very soon, the big one where they're going to have property owner input is with the court, and if we don't get this resolution passed to get us in front of court, then it's not going to take place during a time when most of your property owners are here this summer. We will work very hard to try to get that to take place this summer, so people can be here and have that second special assessment hearing. And I think we talked about this at our very first meeting. If we don't start this process now, we have those two hearings to have before October 1st, that we will have a hard time getting those done, especially when your property owners around the lake are going to be available. So that would be very important. And again, the dam safety unit has let you know that you have issues with this water control structure that need to be addressed soon, and the special assessment district has to be formed. Boundaries have to be formed in order for that cost to be paid for by the special assessment district, which includes the Department of Natural Resources. And for the reasons, you know, that were laid out, you know, basically, the reasons for the Midland Dam break, why this all came to be, is it's very important to get these special assessment district boundaries confirmed, and it makes sense to do this with this needed improvements taking place. I do want to specifically address Ms. Milburn's comment about the study, because I think it's very important to make note of that. So I'm impressed, because it's clear that she has read part 307 with regard to the need for a preliminary study. That preliminary study is normally performed when the lake level is established in the beginning, and it's the cost of a project to actually construct the lake level control structure that establishes the lake level, and that has already taken place. So for purposes of just establishing the boundary, we are, a study is not necessary to be performed before that, that is something that we would work with the delegated authority to get the boundaries right. And Kyle and I are already talking about setting up meetings with each of the townships, including Roscommon Township. Milburn is an officer, to get their input as to the boundaries. And so we are working on putting that together, but can't take too much more action in order to allow us to move forward. So we're getting close to the point board where we're going to have a hard time getting these hearings in when people are in town to be able to tell all the improvements that the dam safety unit with Eagle is requiring take place.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments, I think you answered those, I thought Supervisor Randall and Clerk Milburn's questions deserve an answer, and I think you did that. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, under new business, then, any other thing, any other things from any commissioners in regards to, any questions for Kyle O'Mara and Kelly? Stacy, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner.
Stacy, Commissioner Milburn here. Okay, hypothetical here, we don't do anything today, we just keep dragging our feet, we just keep extending this out. Commissioner Russo has mentioned, he's more familiar with the deadlines and the particulars of this, but the way I understand it is we're on the second extension from Eagle for a problem, I don't know if it's a violation or there's a problem with the dam. How, in your workings with Eagle and projects, how are they as far as just letting people drag these things out, leaving the dam in bad condition? Is there a possibility, have they ever gone and said, "Well, you know, you're being irresponsible, you're not doing things in a timely manner, we're going to take that plate out, you're going to take that plate out, and you're going to take the dam out because you can't maintain it safely"?
So I have worked with clients, counties that have established lake levels, and private clients where there's a couple of things that will take place. You will be fined, you will be found in violation of part 315 if the improvements don't move forward, and then there is, if they believe it is to the point where it's unsafe, they have the authority to request that a drawdown of the lake in place, I'm not suggesting that that would happen, but those are means that are available to them. But just as, you know, the owners who have jurisdiction of this dam, if Eagle is telling you and your engineers are telling you that you have a public safety issue that needs to be addressed immediately, you need to do it, whether they have a hammer of fines or anything else in front of you or not. We learn that in Midland, let's not learn that in Roscommon County.
Interesting, David.
Okay, any commissioners have anything else? You know, this thing starts the process, there's a notice drafting compliance, a lake level hearing that requires mailing notices, which will take place. This is only the first step, propose special assessment district for the Lake Level Control Structure of Holden Lake to address the current issues that we've identified, which is they're being assessed, as we said, but like I said, it's, we have to start this process now, it's only the first process. At this point, there has been no special assessment district established, so this is to start, it would be premature to say that there's any assessments to be involved, because we haven't got to that point yet. So this is just the first steps to ensure that we're doing this thing in the right way. So, and I do think that it's, you know, if you wait, if you wait till summer, the next thing you know, you're in the next year, something that needs to be addressed. I think we've pretty well bettered it. I'm ready to move on. Are you in agreement on new business? Hey, item number seven, motion number one. Amy, are you ready, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Move to adopt resolution number 2022-03-01, Holden Lake Lake Level Delegated Authority. Holden Lake Lake Level Delegated Authority, whereas Holden Lake, located in Markey Township, Denton Township, Roscommon Township, and Lake Township, Roscommon County, Michigan, has a normal lake level established by the Roscommon County 34th Circuit Court under part 307 of the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, part 307. See MCL 324.30701. And whereas, part 307's primary mechanism to fund infrastructure and activities to maintain Holden Lake's normal lake level is by special assessments using a lake level special assessment district established by the circuit court. See generally MCL 324.30714. And may utilize legal counsel and engineers to perform services. And whereas, a review of circuit court's orders relating to Holden Lake's normal lake level found that a lake level special assessment district to maintain Holden Lake's normal lake level has not been established. Moreover, there needs to be maintenance on lake level infrastructure requiring annual expenditures in excess of $10,000. See MCL 324.30722 subsection 4. And whereas, based on the facts above, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners desire to, one, approve annual expenditures over $10,000 for activities to maintain Holden Lake's normal lake level, and, two, approve filing a petition within the circuit court to establish a lake level special assessment district for Holden Lake. Now, therefore, be it resolved, delegated authority, the Roscommon County Administrator Controller shall serve as the county's delegated authority for Holden Lake under part 307. See MCL 324.30702 subsection 2. Over $10,000 expenditures, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners approves annual expenditures over $10,000 for activities to maintain Holden Lake's normal level, including, but not limited to, updating its lake level order to establish a special assessment district involving specifying its boundaries and performing maintenance and repairs on the lake level infrastructure. MCL 324.30722 subsection 4. A, file petition. The Roscommon County Board of Commissioners may utilize legal counsel and engineers to perform services relating to updating Holden Lake's lake level order, preparing boundaries of the recommended Holden Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District under part 307, and any further services that are necessary relating to maintaining the lake's normal lake level. Further, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners specifically authorizes retained legal counsel to file petition in the circuit court to amend the lake level order to establish a special assessment district for Holden Lake. See MCL 324.30707, section 5, circuit court has continuing jurisdiction. B, cost of activities. All costs associated with the activities, including retaining all necessary consultants, legal counsel, and engineers to establish a lake level special assessment district authorized above, shall be reimbursed by the Lake Level Special Assessment District to the extent permitted by part 307.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Melvin, to adopt resolution number 2022-03-01, Holden Lake Lake Level Delegated Authority. I will not read the whole thing. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time, please? Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time, please? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Muckinfeller?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number eight, public comment, please. Yes, Diane.
Respectfully, I feel that if you were concerned that the DEQ or Eagle would not extend your permit, you could have easily contacted them and postponed this until you received that answer. I, I really feel especially since the actual director, past director of the DEQ made the suggestion to have a lake manager, a professional lake manager for all of your lakes in your county. I think they would have considered that.
Oh, Diane, we've been going since May with this damage control structure. I'm only operating on two gates. I have three gates completely shut off. We have to move forward and fix the control structure.
I'm just wondering again.
And there's grants out there right now.
Have we contacted them and said, here, we're just thinking of getting a little bit more input from our residents, our constituents? But I guess.
But there's several grants out there right now we want to take advantage of too.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing.
Thank you.
Hi, um, one of the things that I will, um, point out with this process to you, if you want to share with your residents, is this resolution is step A one. They have at least three other times where they can come in and say, we don't agree with this, we don't agree with this, we don't agree with this. And they get to do it in front of a third party, the Circuit Court. Um, so there are a lot of opportunities for this, for the public. And to Stacy's point, if you're looking at right now, um, when are people going to be here? You want that Circuit Court hearing and those, hey, come look at the proposals, the preliminary boundaries and what this might look like. You want that in the summer. And if they put it off another six months, it's going to be in the winter. Should we pay for that if we don't have special assessments? We can only, yeah. Your problem is that you're looking at millages that the county is not going to be able to pass a countywide millage for Holden Lake. The county's not going to be able to pass a countywide millage for Higgins Lake. The county's not going to be able to. So you're not going to be able to have a countywide millage. And we only have, they only have the authority for countywide millages. The point being, you're not going to have three separate millages to do this and are limited in what you can do. You can actually charge additional monies to the state more than you can a township or a individual.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Nope, I want to be respectful, okay? Eric?
Thank you very much. Uh, please look at the contrast between the Holden Lake graph and the Higgins Lake graph I just handed you. Even though Commissioner Melvin thinks a lot of us are cityards, as he has called us that in many public meetings before, we aren't. I would say that he's projecting. A lot of people who live on and enjoy Higgins know that there's a big problem with the way he manages the levels. Look at the graphs. Higgins hasn't reached its legal level in over a year and Holden is always well above the legal level. The 21-year average shows that Higgins only reaches its legal level for a short period of time, early in the summer and then drops off dramatically for the rest of the summer. Last year, it never even reached a summer level. In 2010, Spicer provided recommendations to mitigate the dramatic drop-off, but this commission ignored them and you did nothing. You had a duty and you breached it. You have the discretion now on how you, you do have the discretion on how you want to maintain the levels, but you don't have the discretion to do nothing. If we are successful in our lawsuit, I believe this commission will be the first commission in the state that lost a lawsuit for not fulfilling their legal responsibility. That would be shameful. I'm not going to predict what will happen, but I feel very good about our chances of success and we shall see. Look how long the winter levels have dropped below the maximum winter drawdown. It's total incompetence. If you manage the winter levels a couple of inches above the drawdown instead of keeping them so close to the maximum drawdown, you wouldn't violate the court over and you wouldn't, and you'd have an easier time recharging the level for the summer. It would help, uh, it would maintain the, uh, it, it would maintain the winter level and even, uh, and you would not violate it at the expense of the summer level. It would help if you raised one gate during the winter. Holden is almost always higher than the legal level, but you continue to send more water down from Higgins. If flooding occurs this spring because of the removal of the dams in the, in the back of this and the Denton, it will be because this commission has failed to do its job again. Repeated pleas have been made by various organizations over the years to implement the Spicer Group's recommendations on Higgins. All ignored. I'm not going, alone in this and I represent a lot of people. So far, we've received over $30,000 in donations towards the legal fees to sue you, which you may have to reimburse if we win our case. Last year, I presented 636 petitions to this commission and another 227 petitions signed at a later date and a survey of 496. Everyone asked the commissioners to enforce the legal level and ask Eagle to modify the 4.75 foot permanent opening in the dam. Again, you ignored everyone. Now you're going to hire the Spicer Group again, the very people you used back in 2010 to work for the work that needs to be done on Holden. I find this comical. I hope you don't ignore those recommendations this time as well. It's amazing. You want to fix the Holden Lake LLCs, but you aren't even thinking about Higgins and how it causes issues on Holden in maintaining its legal level for the water coming from Higgins flows down the Cut River to Holden. If things aren't fixed on Higgins, the levels on Holden will continue to be difficult to maintain, no matter what is done to the LLCs on Holden. I support this resolution that you just passed, but I ask that you also consider adding Higgins and Lake St. Helen to what you're doing, although Lake St. Helen is currently managed much better than Holden or Higgins. If the money is available through grants, as it appears it is now, it now is, it would be financially irresponsible for you not to do so. On a side note, I appreciate Commissioner Snyder allowing you to make a public comment last week during the first public comments portion. The chairman made the right decision to allow me to continue after Commissioner Melvin objected. I found it conical as he was the only one who voted for the resolution to move forward and then he didn't want me to speak about it. Also, the resolution was published in the agenda and it was withdrawn just before the public comments portion came up. Just because you delayed the vote doesn't mean we shouldn't be allowed to talk about it. I, it, it was mentioned several times in the meeting and it was unfinished business. I support Commissioner Snyder's correct ruling. Even if the, the resolution was tabled, it certainly falls under the topic of unfinished business on the agenda. Does this commission really want cause public comment under such circumstances or was it just a childish reaction by Commissioner Melvin because he didn't like what I have to say? Commissioner Milburn had it right when he voted against the changes regarding public comments a while back, when he said we needed more public comment, not less. Finally, Commissioner Melvin should tell us why he disbanded the Higgins Lake Dam Committee back in 2010, just after the Spicer Group made the recommendations for improving the established legal lake levels and why does he oppose having Higgins managed closer to the legal levels? I also want him to explain why he thinks everyone who wasn't born and raised here in Ross Common, why are we cityards? Please do that for us, Commissioner Melvin. And I also agree with Diane Randall on the uh, lake committees. Uh, that's something that really needs to be reestablished and take a lot of heat off you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this time? Where are we at? Where are we at? Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Um, I'm just curious if it was ever since, it's been since May, Commissioner Russo saying that you've been aware of the repairs needed, uh, if you ever did think of using some of the ARPA monies for that infrastructure spending. Um, also considering that we'd have probably other structures and other lakes that need looking at. Um, so that's, I'm curious if you're thinking of using any ARPA monies because it seems like that's the main issue, that we need to fix something and we need to figure out where the money is coming from. So I was just wondering about ARPA money and I was still wondering, um, Jody Valentino had mentioned that a countywide millage wouldn't work, but if it was a countywide millage for lake management and support, I would think that that millage as a countywide millage where the monies would go into that to do, uh, work on all waterways within the county, uh, would be beneficial. And maybe we could even try to get one on the ballot before this process is done and maybe it still can work that way. And we can see if the residents would vote for it. So they would have a voice.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other public comment, please? Andy's saying no. Anybody out there in front of me? Okay, item number nine, adjournment, please. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.